Good evening to everyone called in November sixteenth. City of Mount Vernon Council meeting quarter from Iowa, where we change this city's head of the panelists.
So I'll make a motion to approve it together then.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? No concerns? Or anybody that would like to address the council?
Aye.
Please step forward, go.
To your right.
Microphone.
Microphone over here.
Who gets a really nice camera?
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Jensen. I'm the Director of Main Street and Marketing for Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group. And we've got something later on the agenda that we'll talk about. I wanted to talk to everyone about this cool fundraising project that I just started. And there's a group doing a cool project. And it's really not a bunch of stuff.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. So in the modern of the fiftieth anniversary of a movie called Cold Turkey of Stone to Night, this group to call attention to that fiftieth anniversary is offering fifty thousand dollars to one small town in Iowa. They can offer the best metrics of two months of no nicotine. So the program as it's designed is asking for twenty people who smoke churro vapor to sign up to be a part of Mount Vernon's entry into this contest. And it's completely free to those that are choosing to secede nicotine over the course of two months. But if we win, we will have fifty thousand dollars that we can use toward a community good. So the committee, there's twelve of us on it, have chosen that part of that money will go to the completion of the Uptown Alley project that we're currently working on. And the other part will go to equipment for an exercise trail out by the wellness center. So I signed up three smokers, churro vapers so far. The contest doesn't begin until January one. We're working directly with Mercy Care Business Solutions. And these people know what they're doing when it's getting people to stop smoking. I do know that there's only two communities in Iowa that have signed up for this contest. And so already our tests are pretty good. And you know, we kind of take butt at this kind of stuff. So if you know anyone that they think it's time to quit smoking, chewing, or vaping, this would be a really good opportunity for them to get off the nicotine and do something really great for their community. I made contact on this, so if you know anyone that is at all interested, I'd be happy to talk to them about it. That was all. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? Seeing going on, we'll move on to the consent agenda, approval of council meetings, number two council meeting, approval of winter license for Gary's booze. Point Chairman Jordan to plan the zoning commission. Point Leader Rogers, Mary Evans, Grace Chamberlain to the historic renovation commission. Point Rowan People, Heather鴻鴻, or Hallman to parse and correct. Point Lauren Conley, Joel Wolf to assistant building officials. And the point Joel Wolf, Brown Guards, Norm Meyer to construction board of appeals.
I have a quick question on these, and I just don't quite understand the way they play together, as well as I may be ought to. But number six and seven, you've got Joel Wolf being appointed as assistant building official, and then also on the construction board of appeals. Is there a possibility that a decision we would make as an assistant building official would end up in front of him as an appeal?
No, because we moved to Lynn County. And Lynn County will actually be the designated building official first. It's a bit more symbolic than it used to be, honestly, Scott. So really, we don't have any concerns. I noticed that a couple of years ago, but now that we've contracted with Lynn County, it's kind of a viewpoint.
Okay, that was my, that was my only concern on that. I didn't want to, I was chasing my tails. So with that being said, I would move to approval of the decision.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No concerns? Next item is public hearing. Public hearing is adopted and offered between the twenty eight police services agreement. I have ordered a public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to address the council under title? Seeing no one, close the public hearing and move to resolution eleven dash sixteen, that's point five E, adopting an operative of the twenty eight police services agreement. Chris, who's speaking on this?
Chief sent out a memo earlier in the week. Lisbon has had their public hearing. They expect to vote on this next week. Approval tonight by the Mount Vernon City Council doesn't really hinder anything. If they have any different changes that they would like to see, we would actually have to go back and readopt this document. However, with that being said, we've had plenty of conversations. It's been through Lisbon's attorney, Mount Vernon's attorney. Their public hearing already, so we feel fairly comfortable with the document now. If you approve this tonight, and it's kind of back in Lisbon's lap as far as whether or not they want to make this go forward, we feel pretty confident. Doug's there as well, but we feel fairly confident with the document that we have. Moving forward, it is the best option for the city of Mount Vernon and in the end Lisbon as well, because they get three sixty-five, twenty-four-seven service, which they don't have now. It's a small savings to Lisbon, but there's some things that they don't have to necessarily, we don't have to double up on as far as subscriptions and things like that. But there is a clause in there not to exceed five percent per year. I don't believe that it will increase to five percent per year, but the initial contract's five years. Believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's eighteen months, Doug. Have to give you a filler if we want to end the contract. But all in all, this is a good thing. This will allow us to provide Lisbon better service, but it also allows us to keep better staff. Hopefully, as a slightly bigger department, we'll be able to attract more individuals during the hiring process. So I'm excited about the prospect. I think Chief's excited about the prospect. Really, the new building that you're sitting in right now, I think it's kind of opened the door for us to truly move forward and become an easier situation for both. But yeah, I'm anxious for Lisbon to take a vote on this, and I hope that moves forward.
I would just add, I agree with what Chris said. The increase to public safety, I think, is probably my biggest draw to this. You know, we struggled with twenty-four-seven coverage, especially if you got somebody off injured on vacation, different things like that, trying to maintain coverage and reducing overtime. So I think the ability to use all of the law enforcement resources that both communities have and apply that efficiently between the two communities as one agency is going to bring both agencies some savings and provide opportunities and abilities that we already have and look for other things that we can continue to do and maybe expand upon as well. So I'm excited and I fully support it.
Chief, the last thing I share from Monday, this is for Monday, for Lisbon's meeting last Monday, so I know you're in person.
Yep, Lisbon's open.
So hey, Jamie, before he starts, can he move to some speaker sort of thing so we can hear him better?
There should be. I've got a mic in front of me. Can you hear it?
It's really warbly.
Yeah, it's not good.
Warbly?
Warbly?
Warbly.
Is this from the last warbly?
Yes.
Very good.
That's fair.
It's good, but that's fair. That was good. So back to Jamie's question, the mayor's question. Attended Lisbon's meeting last week for the public hearing. I believe there was approximately five or six in attendance for that. One person, former council member, spoke out against it. His main, seemed to be the main, part of the main issue was, again, Lisbon's identity. Trying to maintain their own service and operating from there. There was a couple of letters they received in written format. They did not get the contest of that, what they had from there. And then there were several, or a few other citizens there that spoke out in favor of it as well. So it was kind of a mix, but probably a total of five people spoke. All council members, you know, I think we've addressed all of their concerns, the conversations that we had at the public hearing. It seemed the language of the contract that you have were comfortable with that, so they didn't, they think that they're just given the public hearing option and weren't concerned about any future delays or anything like that in the language in the contract.
And then do we know how the new administrator feels?
He was actually one of the citizens there that spoke out very strongly and supported us at the meeting. He challenged some of the arguments against it and gave his assessment of it and had him background with law enforcement as well. He described it as four home runs for them, so.
Any other questions for Chief, for Chris? All in favor of taking a motion?
I would move approval of, where? Yeah, I would move, sorry. I would move rule of the adoption of the Mount Vernon Lisbon twenty-eight E police services agreed.
I will second.
Go ahead.
Any further questions? Any comments? Roll call please.
Herman? Yes. West?
Yes.
Brown Bush?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right, it's actually a full of resolutions. We could get through a break, we have a pretty routine business from an annual operating standard point, final one, resolution eleven sixteen twenty twenty eight, proving the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to the Department of Maryland. Chris?
Yeah, really nothing in this document overly surprising. We've been fairly fiscally sound with our TIP use. This is the document that goes actually to the state legislature. This was created, I wouldn't say about eight years ago now, when they really kind of questioned TIP use and where the money was going. So, like I said, very comfortable and happy where our TIP report is sitting. So this is the one that has to be into the state by December first. Are you risk using TIP in the future for that following year?
Any other questions? All in favor of taking a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution eleven dash sixteen dash twenty twenty A.
I'll second.
Any comments? Roll call please.
Weesler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Brown Bush?
Yes.
Item two, resolution eleven sixteen twenty twenty B, proving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty. Chris?
Same thing. This actually goes to the auditor's office on an annual basis. Just shows our revenues and expenditures for the year, actual numbers versus the estimated budget. Again, nothing out of the ordinary here. Happy with where we're at so far, so be happier if I know what we're going to get back for Doratio, but so far so good.
Anybody have any questions? Rose? Your handle?
To approve of resolution eleven dash sixteen dash twenty twenty B, approving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Comment? Roll call please.
West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Brown Bush?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
All right, item three, resolution eleven sixteen twenty twenty C, certified with TIP debt incurred in calendar year twenty twenty for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to the Lynn County Auditor. Chris?
Yeah, normally you only have one document, and I apologize for all the extra pages that are blank, but you have to submit the entire application annually. Probably the biggest takeaway being here is, is the two residential subdivisions, because we don't know exactly what's going to be on the tax rolls for this year. We just basically ask for all available funding. It's kind of a generic way to make sure that we get all the taxes once they're paid. For what I would consider our normal TIP ask, you know, we're just down over five hundred thousand dollars, about five hundred thirty thousand dollars for this year. And again, we fluctuate between five hundred thousand and seven hundred fifty thousand. We're going to fluctuate hopefully moving forward as well. So we're at where we need to be, actually a little lower than what we typically have done, so good thing for the school and the county as well. But we'll try to keep kind of in that range here in here.
Any questions for Chris? No one has taken a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution eleven dash sixteen dash twenty twenty C, certified with TIP debt incurred calendar year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second. Any comments? Roll call please.
Rose?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Brown Bush?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
All right, item five, resolution eleven sixteen dash twenty twenty E, accepting the public improvements known as the eighth amendment Northwest Quiet Zone Project. Chris?
So for the contract purposes, this project was complete. The overall project cost ended up being seventy-one thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. I filled out a couple pieces of paper right before I left for quarantine, so I'm hoping that we're closer to them not going to listen about that intercellion effect. I continue to kind of howl in B and K about it, so it seems like we get an update about once a week. Everything right now is back at UP still, so we seem to be getting closer, but we can finalize the project as far as the contractor is concerned.
So any word about the repairs? You know, it's so uneven and terrible there, just like it was at Highway one.
They came in and fixed Highway one only because I think the DOT finally got involved. We continue to send the messages. They do it at their own pace. I kind of got excited because they were there to make some repairs. Actually, my wife and I were on the walk before we got quarantined, the light, the activation. The train was probably within, looked like about two hundred yards of the interchange before the lights got activated. Thankfully, the train was slow. They did have somebody there almost immediately, and I kind of was hoping that they were going to fix it, like they did Highway one, but of course, they fixed the lights and lights.
Okay.
So no actual or moderate, concrete timeframe on, because I mean, aside from a couple of other things that we've worked on recently, this is what I hear. So any timeframe that we're hearing from UP or anything like that?
No, and I hate to throw a tie down my mouth, Scott. It was supposed to be within ninety days of the final completion. We've sent that documentation in. About three weeks ago, I got some more documentation from the UP via B and K. I signed that paperwork and sent that back in. It's kind of become just a Monday ritual for me that I reach out to Dave, check and do it, and then in turn reaches back out to UP, but they definitely work on their own speed for sure, and they don't move for anybody.
Well, one quick reminder, and then I'll make a motion, but so this came in under seventy-two thousand. There was a point where we were talking about this being two hundred fifty thousand. So this was a good project and came in well where we'd rather it come in. So anyway, having said that, I would move approval of resolution eleven dash sixteen dash twenty twenty E, accepting the public improvements known as the eighth amendment Northwest Quiet Zone Project.
This is dead, I'll second.
Any comments? Roll call please.
Brown Bush?
Yes.
Weesler?
Yes.
West? West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
All right, next item, motions for approval by the one, consideration of claims list. Any questions or requests for taking a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve claims list after the debate.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? No concerns? Item two, discussion of consideration of possible changes to twenty twenty goals that you report. Chris?
I haven't seen that, I believe, three emails now from council regarding this document, so this was just kind of one last opportunity if you had any changes that you wanted to make. Otherwise, you will see this once again at probably the next council meeting, and it's just basically for formal adoption.
Anybody have any questions on the documents? Any last minute thoughts, tangents?
The only thing I noted, I thought it was a fair representation of our conversation and the order. The only thing I noted, and I sent this to Chris, but the front of it says twenty seventeen goal set, or twenty seventeen.
Yeah, Scott noted.
We should update that, but yeah, I thought it was a good document. And I've said it before, but my favorite part about these is that not only do we rank them, but then as we check things off the list, Chris brings back the ones that we haven't dealt with. So it's a living document, and I like that that's how we do it.
Anybody else? All in favor of taking a motion?
I would move approval of the twenty twenty goal setting report.
You don't have to approve this, Bob. No question.
Okay, so we'll get a.
This is the next meeting. I just wanted to make sure if we had any changes.
All right, then.
You're on mute, Scott. Sorry, I do want to just comment that I appreciate that we did this, and the timing worked out very well, because as you guys know, I was able to reference it in our rules when I was talking about the bike test plans and strategy. And, you know, having something like this documented so that people can see what our priorities are, I appreciate, so good exercise.
Anybody else? Okay. Next item, discussion of consideration of pay application three for total construction of the Northwest Quiet Zone Project.
Yeah, this is just a retainage, three thousand five hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. This gets issued to them thirty days after tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion to move ahead with the pay application three for total construction of the Northwest Quiet Zone Project.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? No concerns? Item four, discussion of consideration of audio visual technology searches for the police department. I'm wittering in right now.
We are debugging at this time, but it's obviously much better than our last meeting. So as you can see, we have a pantail too, P on our clear. You have wireless mics on your system. One issue we did identify may be the cordless mic that Joe's trying to use, tying it with the system and getting a lot of the feedback, so we may be replacing that shortly as well. It was kind of on land expense, but I think the Zoom world's going to be much happier. They can hear us on the other end, we're able to hear through them, so I think it's good move.
Chris, anything you want to add?
No, just, I was just going to ask the council to formally vote on this. Obviously, we wanted to have it in place for tonight's meeting. The amount was ten thousand seven hundred ten dollars and ninety cents. This is above my allowed payment that I did reach out to mayor prior to, but I definitely wanted to try, given the issues we had at the last meeting, to have this in place. So I'm just asking for a formal vote on the purchases.
And is the.
Especially important with where we are now with COVID.
Yes.
And then correct my form of request.
I would move to approve the A D equipment from the police station to R C tech in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred twenty ninety cents.
And that's got to go. Yeah, so I just had one quick question, and then I'll go ahead and second. My understanding is then, as we down the road renovate the actual council chambers, that this system would then ideally be retrofitted into there, is that correct?
Therefore, since you are.
Go ahead, Chris.
I was just going to say, this system could stay with Doug. Not to say that we couldn't integrate it back into City Hall if we needed to, but we would actually probably leave it at the PD and be integrated with their program, but one way or another, it'll be at one of these two buildings. Just kind of depends on when life gets back this time I go home.
In that case, I will second, second his motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
Motion carries. Next item, item five, discussion of consideration of amended Mount Vernon purchasing policy. Chris?
So basically FEMA came back and said your purchasing policies have to include two pages of language that they provide. So basically, through purchase orders all the way down to write when you get under federal grant, under federal grants, that was our normal purchasing policy. And then everything after federal grants is what FEMA is requiring us to have in our purchasing policy in order to get reimbursements in the future, so. Congratulations, you just doubled the size of your purchasing volume.
Does it effectively change anything for us?
Not really. It does in the sense of, you know, for instance, during Doratio, you know, we try to limit the amount of expenditures we have, say, like M and K on an emergency basis. They really want to make sure that we try to bid this out and do what we can. So we do have the ability, like I said, during the emergency, during emergencies, to utilize contractors as we see fit, but they really want us to utilize kind of this bidding procedure if we can when things start to slow down, which is exactly what we've done, so.
Do we have to do any attestation or any, is there any compliance checking to all this C F R stuff, the C F R?
Yes, through the FEMA application. So there's a series of deadlines and paperwork that we have to fill out, thankfully. Laura's kind of stepped up the point, she's been my point person with it. But to answer your question, yes, we will for both the COVID and Doratio related event.
Any other questions?
If we fall, just going down the whatever route, if we fall out of compliance with something that's written here, does that impact any of our ability to obtain funding or anything like that? I mean.
It can, it can impact our ability to get funding back. So all of the expenditures for us are upfront. We seek reimbursement moving forward. Yes, I mean, it could. But really, it's designed, for instance, the grant application that Doug is looking to put forward for the police station that you're in now. It was through the federal government and a subsidiary of FEMA as well. They wanted us to have this language in our purchasing policy, and we got more points during the grant application. So yes, it does. I mean, we definitely, thankfully, we have a staff that has been through this a couple times, so we know as soon as something like Doratio hits certain criteria that we have to start being mindful of right off the bat. So it will be, I think it's only going to get worse moving forward as we're in the midst of two or three disasters right now on top of COVID, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? No one has taken a motion?
Move approval of the amended purchasing policy.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? No concerns? Item six, discussion of consideration of South Valley private amenities. C D D. Chris?
Those are the audience, um, basically the, the cities put forward, um, the South Alley project and C D G, the Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon area arts council are both looking to add some amenities to that alley to make more of a pocket park. There's a, a sign that they're looking to, uh, put over the alley. Uh, Joe will have to tell you what they've decided for the name of the pocket park, I think. Um, there were two that, at our last meeting, that they were kind of tossing around. Tables, chairs, um, trash cans. We did talk about benches, but I think we're gonna get it too cluttered if we do, so the benches might come after the fact. Uh, of course, the alley's going to be lit, we have electric capabilities that are being done by the city, but there's the mural that is going to be attached to, um, Lance Dixon's wall. I don't know, I think it's on the, uh, would be on the west side of that alley, but, um, just want to make sure that the council's okay with everything that's going on before they start spending funds out to speak artists, so on so forth, so.
Did they, did this get addressed?
Those are the, if you have any questions, um, other than that, I should have been fairly happy with what they're planning to do.
I love it, love the concept and love all the work they've done to this point, excited about it.
It's definitely gonna look pretty cool and it's all done.
Yep.
What's, uh, what's the name?
So the committee wants to, uh, call this park, um, Hilltop Park. Um, hard to find, first off, the place where it is on top of the hill, and secondly, the, the original name of the town. That's what they've decided. So we have a, uh, an interactive children's art piece in there, which is a, a big, big chalkboard.
Can I?
Can you?
Yeah.
Joe?
Joe, is Joe with you?
Can you hear me now?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me now? Okay, so the, the committee that put together, uh, wants to name this, uh, Hilltop Park. And the, the theme of the, of the space is that it's a, a park that's welcoming to everyone. Uh, we've already, um, determined that it will have a nice frame up there to make it handicap accessible, but we also want to have it, uh, welcoming to all ages. So because we have chalk, it's a huge part of our community here. Uh, one wall will be, I guess the east wall, gonna start the teak wall. We'll have several, uh, pieces, interactive chalk pieces, so kids can go in there and chalk up. Uh, they're not chalking on the building, they're chalking for pieces that are put on, on top of the building. And then, uh, we have a mural on the other side that's gonna continue with this theme, is what we're asking. And then, uh, we're working with Liberty Iron Works, they're gonna do the, uh, furniture, and then they're gonna do a big arch over the top of it that would say Hilltop Park. Unless someone out there comes up with a better name, that's where the committee is right now. And, uh, I think that's all, I think that's what we're doing. Any questions?
Hey, Joe? Yeah, this is a really miniscule thing, but how are they, or where are they gonna store the chalk in terms of heeding it from the?
Well, they talked about that in our last meeting, and we decided that we need to make this a bring your own chalk park. We're not gonna leave anything out there, and kids and families need to bring their own in.
But what about families that come to town that don't know about it?
Well, you know what, if they go across the street to Silver Spider, they're gonna be able to buy some chalk that they can use now.
Awesome.
Yeah.
So that like works right with Silver Spider?
I'm sorry, what?
And they'll be assigned to that effect, so they know that?
Uh, there's no plan right now, but I think that would be very easy to put up there, yeah.
Well, I think that Joe was saying Steph is, um, probably just encouraging people to shop local if they want to find chalk. Well, yeah, but.
There was a long discussion in the committee about leaving chalk out and having people stumble in from the bars and put those what while they're chopping. And, uh, so that's why we decided it was a bring your own chalk.
Okay, they, they've thought about it longer than I have, so.
Well, we had a lot of discussion about it, and then I did want you to know that, uh, Sarah and Lance Dixon, Sarah was a part of all the meetings, so they're the building owners, both buildings, right, in that area, so, uh, they're supportive of what we're doing, and that was really important to us.
Absolutely.
And just so you know, I, I think the, one of the, one of the things, Stephanie, is, is the tables and chairs likely won't be out during winter time, but when they are out, we can put, uh, either table tents or laminated, well, brochures.
Yeah.
So just, uh, another way to have somebody that does this encourage people to businesses.
Yeah.
Well, with, with those last, the tables are perfect, they're bolted there, so people can't move the tables or chairs around. That was one important committee too, because it's just human nature when you've got a party of six to pick a table up or move the chairs around, and we didn't want that, we wanted to just leave it. Three tables with four chairs around each one.
Wonderful to see a plan that was developed, what, ten years ago? Start to have legs. Perfect.
It's taken us a while, hasn't it?
It has taken a while.
Hey, Joe? Just me and Deb's advocate.
Or, or raise it to a person. Yep.
Just me and Deb's advocate, uh.
Mention your name, please.
Yeah, sorry. This is Eldon. Again, I guess me and Deb's advocate, uh, if, uh, this directive to you, Joe, um, so if, if you and the committee, I didn't know if you guys maybe have thought about if that, if the chalk idea goes right and maybe doesn't turn out quite like we had planned, um, if, what would we do with that area where that chalk board, I guess, would, would be, um, have there, has there been any thought to that, I guess?
I guess I don't understand the question. So if chalk board are put on a.
Yes, Mike, Joe.
Hand it to me and step back. So, um, so the question is about the chalkboards themselves. So they're, they're affixed to a, uh, another structure that's affixed to the wall, right? So it all can come out just as the mural, right, across the alley, right? So it all can come out at any time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think for, for Eldon's purposes, um, really what we're looking at is the, the tables being the fixture along with some planters and then the signage, but everything else is attached to the wall, so it push comes to shove, um, if anything does have to be removed, if it doesn't go quite the way that we had expected, it can be removed. I had the same questions, Eldon, um, I had the same concerns about, uh, artwork being open down the alley and everywhere it's not supposed to be as well, so, um, this is going to, it, this has the potential to add work to our staff, but, um,
Well, no, I, I mean, I like, I love the idea, uh, I love the idea, and I don't want to go away from that. I'm just worried if, if, say we can't stop people from putting profanity on there, or, or this doesn't work out the chopping, how can we, have we put any thought into doing something cool like, just like a permanent mural, mural or?
Because there's a mural across the alley, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah, again, to replace the chalkboards, that may become an issue, that's all, it, like.
Yeah, he's a business owner, so I think we would be open to it if we didn't do anything, um, adverse on the first one, but, yeah, that was my, my first thought was, um, what is going to be written up and down with an hour or put fence with it with students when lighting's back to normal? Because it does happen in our parks already, so, uh, valid, valid questions, and I think it'll just, thankfully, the, the wall space can be, um, renovated or upgraded in the future should that become an issue.
Are there gonna be any security features? Cameras, et cetera, on that?
That's not an argument, but I certainly we open to it.
Not at this point here, um, we will, if we need to, we have the capabilities of incorporating them if need be, but, um, at this time, no, uh, really outside, like I said, from the, the chalk perspective, the worst that it is is that we have to try and wash it off and, and spend some time down there, but, um, from the damage perspective, it's pretty lit, and there will be lights up and down that alley, so, um, giving kind of everybody the benefit of the doubt, and I'm hoping not to see a significant amount of damage up there.
There was, this discussion came up in the meeting, and, you know, the, the question was is that there have been, um, people late night outside of bars messing on all parts of Uptown. Um, Saturday, Sundays, we do the bucket day, clean up vomit and other things, and it's just part of it. So that our community is not taxed with trying to clean up or take care of those type of issues. We were creating a nice, friendly amenity in, uh, Uptown. Uh, children, families, adults, adults, everybody feels welcome there, so that's what we have put together. So those other issues I think are beyond, but this committee can.
I'm sorry. And it's, and it sounds like you've had discussions and taken proper progress. I love this, I think it's, uh, to, I, I think Deb's point is great to see.
What are you talking?
Yeah, sorry, can you hear me? I think it's great to see to Deb's point that, you know, something that we've been talking about for ten years, uh.
Mayor, who was talking?
This is Scott. Now it's talking, uh, something might be wrong with my. Okay, now I've got two mics, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Alright, um, so, and anyway, nothing of importance, just echoing your point that it's nice to see, uh, plan ten years in the making, uh, come to fruition, so. With that said.
So.
Yeah, but.
I do have a question. Is there a link liability to the city or to C D G? If those buildings change ownership at some point in time and this installation is on those buildings? That's question one. Question two, if there is chalk or something that is applied to those bricks, did we do our due diligence to know what the cleaning mechanism is for those bricks? Because they're perhaps ordinary little bricks.
Well, it would, the, the mechanism would be any different than after a chalk removal, right? We do our best to, to see to it that, uh, chalk doesn't get on the bricks, but the chalk gets on the bricks, and then chalk eventually comes off the bricks until the next year, so.
I just want from a city perspective to understand where our liability stops and starts with this project. I think it's a wonderful project, I'm absolutely over the moon about it.
So in talking about with the homeowner, the building owner? Because Lance and Sarah were part of this, so they, they're aware.
I, I totally get it, today it's Lance and Sarah.
Right.
And years from now, gosh knows who.
Yeah.
Right? I just want to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's, that's all I'm saying.
Well, the, the, the way that the, the mural and the chalkboards are created, they could be removed from the building if, if there's a issue later, and I guess we come up with another option at that point. But they can be removed and something could be put up in their place, does that help you?
From a liability perspective, Deb, we would be responsible for removing anything if a future building owner required it. Um, we can ask Lance, um, if he would sign a document that we could, um, record, sorry, I'm starting to think of the word, record has, um, with the county so that it would be legal, however, um, it's been interesting, so from the start of this project, Lance didn't own the building to where we're at now, and Lance does own the building, thankfully, they were on board with this from the get-go, but the, the mural itself, I believe, attached, if I'm not mistaken, Joe attaches to the building as it is, so, you know, if there is any future issue, especially if it looks like it, you know, degrading the brick on the exterior, then we would be responsible for removing it and coming up with an alternative. I think all of the amenities that Joe was talking about definitely adds to the pocket park, the pocket park could stand on its own. Uh, just with the chairs and, uh, the new lighting, but it does add to the ambiance, but, um, I would say also though, that there's opportunities, I think, in the future, I mean, one of the, the things that I do enjoy about what is being proposed is, should we decide to change, uh, in the future, ten years from now, um, a major event comes along or something like that, uh, everything that we put on the, on the edges, I think, could be, um, changed, and we could go ahead and make updates without actually spending a significant amount of money.
I, I just, again, I just want to make sure that, um, as a, as a council, we understand where the city's liability stops and starts with this.
Yeah, so, yeah, even though we're not spending funds on this, the reason I had Joe bring this forward to you is, is ultimately, this is going to fall back to us. I want to make sure that the council's aware of what's being put in place in that, um, you know, if it's damaged, it's not necessarily going to be C D G or the area arts council that, that will be doing the replacement. Once we approve these amenities, that if something happens in the future, um, we're, we're ensuring it, so. So, yeah, just wanted, I, I think that was the point for me having them come in front of you, is to understand that the more that we put in there, the more responsibility we do have of the program.
I'm willing to take that risk, given that, uh, it's, it was proven that, uh, the outdoor student healthcare businesses and the small test that we did, and, uh, it's worth it.
Thankfully, nothing there is in the realm from a budget standpoint that makes me overly nervous. Um, the lighting structure that we're actually building in as part of the project is probably the most expensive thing to replace, and gives me the most heartburn, but it would be a.
Alright, any other questions for the ladies in the table?
And move approval of the, uh, South Alley Project amenities as presented.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Both? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a report.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, anything on our rights for the report?
Uh, no, nothing additional.
Any questions for Chief? Next item, offering a public works report. Eldon, anything for the council? That you want to share with council? Public works, what?
Uh, I don't, yeah, I don't know. So, uh, I am all into this, but, uh, making a conversation a whole lot, but, uh, I have a whole list of things I was gonna tell you what we've been doing, because we've been doing a lot, but, um, uh, I guess the one big thing is we're gonna, I plan on extending the leak pickup, uh, into next week, just for a few days, but, but other than that, we're trying to, trying to get that up on, playing up the count and, um, yeah, no, we're different, we, uh, fix the water leak that you can, uh, for some time, I'm not sure if we got that long, but it's been some time, we got the, we got the leak fixed and the passport back in, in a matter of a couple days, so, Joe was leaking a fair amount of water, I don't, I don't know if the album's here, but, uh, Alex could give you a better idea of that, um. Yeah, I'm trying to remember, I have a list, this is right now, I don't necessarily prepare for it, but.
Right. We have to see the Christmas decorations, holiday decorations going out by, I don't know if that started today.
Yeah, I seen, and I kind of dropped the ball on that because I wasn't, uh, thinking. Uh, I have a list of things, anyways, uh, Joe, Joe freshened up on that, um, the end of last week, and I got the guys on that earlier today, um, so, so, yeah, we, we filled up the whole like holiday season. Do you guys have any question on anything? As far as the public works, those are.
So Eldon, Eldon, this is Joe, re, re, sorry, I'm, I'm. Sorry, I'm speaking from the phone. Remind me and remind the citizens when leak pickup will end, number one. And then how to get access to mulch. Mulch and/or what's the other stuff called?
Calcoes.
Calcoes, that's the other word, yes.
Yeah, now we've moved everything out in the new side of the Public Works, future Public Works facility. Uh, Brian, well, we do have a need to enter and serve, but we keep locked just to kind of prevent unawnessed people from entering and dumping or whatever. But if anyone, any resident wants to get in there to grab some mulch or calcoes or what have you, if you just want to just call, City Hall arranged an appointment at this point. We can make sure somebody's out there to assist you and do it. So and the leak pickup, I think, I think the dates normally will go to the end of this week. But I think our policy states just till Thanksgiving, a little more day. So I was... I don't know, it's been one of those years.
Again.
A little slightly awkward and just trying to get caught up. And so, yeah, I'm just, I'm personally, right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm just extending that for a couple more days. Next week here, trying to get as much done as we can before we put the lease up early, I feel. Does that answer your questions at all?
It does. It does. And sometimes you have to remember the questions are so that everyone else hears it.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eldon. Matthew, how about you, sir, Park Rec?
Well, I don't understand before you'd say I have nothing to say, but you know that's not gonna happen. So I'll first start off with Parker Rec programs. This morning, all three community directors, Lisbon, Solon, and Mount Vernon got together to talk about girls' basketball. And all three were in agreement of canceling our season. So that's the one part that we are going to bring forward to you. If you've been following the governor today at 6:00 PM, she came out with a new proclamation that actually canceled it for us. So there's a new proclamation that's out, just in a synopsis. It's going to affect Parker Rec programs as well as it's going to affect the OBC in some direction. We haven't quite... I have... You should view the whole entire written document, and I've got some snippets from it just from the press conference. And Chris, you can speak in as well, I assume you saw it.
I haven't got to watch all of it, but yes, I mean, for the most part, you know, just to kind of piggyback on what Matt's saying is, is we're gonna have to extend privileges at the OBC and memberships at the OBC. It's just one of those, it's just gonna be one of those years and you're just gonna have to... You know, the building itself is just gonna have to bear with us for this year and a half. And thankfully, we have a nice mistake that it'll fall back on. Because I think we're gonna need it at least for the first few years through this whole cycle. So yeah, I think that, you know, Matt and I, Matt and Secretary and I talked earlier today, prior to the governor's, and we were gonna make that recommendation to the council. We introduced mask use, then the Lynn County Public Health changed their rules so that mask use wasn't necessarily going to prevent you from having to quarantine. So, you know, mask or no mask, with the number of kids that are out at the school, and it's not necessarily the positivity rate right now that's hurting the schools. It's just the amount of kids that have to quarantine because of it. So I think Mount Vernon is, from a positivity rate, it's something like less than 2%. But they have over 200 kids that are out. And, you know, unfortunately, rec programs are playing into that because of the quarantine issue. So right now, it's just not worth it. I know there's really...
Couple of things. I tried to catch as much of that conference as I could before I came in. Check it out. And of course, I know we will, but if I heard right, no group fitness classes.
That's correct.
Okay, and the other thing that I just think that we should do, I just feel like it's the right thing to do, is that we should require masks in that building. I, you know, the Mount Vernon volleyball team played with masks all the year and look how far they got. I just think, I would feel so much better if we did the right thing, made it an easy direction. You come in, you wear a mask. It's my opinion on that. I'd rather do that than close it now.
Are you looking at me?
Well, I would echo Stephanie's about what I would also... Well, this is, this is Scott. I would, I would echo Stephanie's thoughts. I would also, historically what's happened, proclamation comes out, Matt and Chris, it seems like, get together, figure out what it means and how it affects us, and then make a recommendation. So, but I would look to help slow this down as much as we can, so.
The thing is, I'm letting them know ahead of time what my thoughts are.
Agreed.
Here's the deal, we don't get together for two more weeks. And look what has happened the last two weeks. So I'm just telling you guys, my opinion strong is to require masks in that building.
So knowing, because I was watching Deb shake her head yes as well, so knowing that there's three. Keep in mind, as far as the policies are concerned, staff does its best to make sure that we have, you know, meeting the governor's guidelines and things like that. But ultimately, the control and operation of the buildings themselves are the city council. If there is a majority of you that would like us to require masks, I mean, that's your fault.
Wait, can I ask a question real quick, though? I think you're, are you asking for masks to be worn even while people are working out?
Yes.
Okay, we want to make sure that was very clear, okay?
So I think we require masks upon entrance and when we're exiting or when they're walking around. You are asking us to require that masks be worn in that building 24/7, yes, if possible?
Well, enforcement 24/7 would be tough, as you know, but they're in operational hours.
Sure.
I mean, unless you ask them on camera and enforce it.
No, no.
No, I'm not saying that. The science needs to be here, right?
Science is all over. We can make signs that state that you have to have a mask on at all times. We can easily do that. It's just, you know, just sometimes, you know, we can go on a camera, we can see people coming to the building, we can see where they go, we can see everything outside of operational hours. If you want me to enforce that, I can do that. It just takes a little bit of work.
But I think the alternative is, yeah, I mean, we keep pushing this. You know, we got to almost to stage three and now we're going backwards, so.
Yep. We're lucky we're not shut. Right.
Yeah, I would say that's basically what we would tell individuals is this is our kind of last ditch effort to keep everything open. The other thing too is, is I know Matt, as he discussed today, and he can elaborate on this, you know, the instructors would like to take some of the classes back online based upon the governor's recommendation or new proclamation. We might have to go back that way anyway. But it provides some technology issues, so we'll work on that for the rest of this week. And I know Matt, who spent some time on it this morning, will have to spend some more time on it this week. So the mask use, like I said, as it relates to it being a public building, that's the city's topic for sure.
So if we did install something like this, when is the council, the council works? When do you want us to install it?
If I can answer to you, typically it takes about 48 hours to get enough signage up to let them know that we're going through that. So if we can, we would go ahead and start notifying everybody tomorrow and then implement this, you know, starting like Thursday or Friday.
Stephanie? I think we got an email out tomorrow to let people know. You know, maybe some people almost arrive at the building, whether there's some kind of incident or not, and know what they need to do. And, you know, I'm not doing this for the fun of it. I know that you and Chris, Matt, and Sarah, you guys have done a great job all year long. But it is scary out there right now.
It's kind of the time of the times right now.
Ryan, do you have anything else you'd want to add?
Well, I guess, so yeah, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Is that what the entire council wants us to do?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
I just had a lot before I came into this meeting about the big bull sack again, about putting a mask for everything. And I use the facility, I wouldn't wear a mask, separate classes and running. But I think it's gonna be hard to enforce some things and others. So it's either gonna be all or nothing, and this is the case to err to the side of making masks for everything, I'd say. So that's a run.
Yep. We don't need to create a more gray area. It just needs to be.
Well, you know, in my conversations with the school, the kids are showing us that it can, it can work. If anybody's doing the mask situation or handling the mask situation better than anybody else, it's our kids.
Now, I would fully support Scott's idea in terms of make sure, you know, Matt, you press read through the new language from, you know, and let us know. Maybe send a summary or any other recommendations that you guys may have to the councils.
Yeah, I think some of it's very clear. There are no large gatherings of sports of any kind. So, you know, football basketball is done, rentals are gonna be done, there's no gatherings of sports. So that's pretty much taken care of. So it's, yeah, the trick is that it takes place tonight, midnight. So we have to do a pretty quick turnaround here tonight and let people know some of those things and then just do some, some kind of modifications fairly quickly. We haven't decided what we're totally gonna do online, live stream for Zoom or not. And which classes can do that. Actually, some of the classes aren't able to do that. Give you an example, spin. Unless you have a spin bike at home, you aren't gonna be able to do spin. So there are some things we've gotta consider. So, yeah, all right, well, if you're giving us a direction, I appreciate that, and we'll make it proud.
Anything else outside of this?
No, I think that's it. Is there anything I'm missing?
No, those were the big things. And like I said, thank you to the council for your patience, knowing, letting staff kind of work through this. And I don't want to say that we push the limits by any means, but we wait till enough things happen to move things forward. And hopefully, you're happy with the way you've been doing things and bringing it to you. So, yeah, we'll just kind of continue down the path and God hope for the best through the holidays.
I do think we've done a right rock all the way, like learning it back, and it's been successful. And people are appreciative of that. So, but in the same token, knowing we're gonna make some other modifications, we know that there are gonna be some people freezing memberships. So we'll listen. We'll bite the bullet and move on.
Just not anything related to the meeting, just wanted to let you know the Vikings just scored.
All right, next item.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, Mark and Public Works Report. Chris, make this quick.
Nothing really. I, you know, if you wanna pay closer attention to the green pages, the only thing that I wanted to highlight was, you know, we did the $5 million borrowing. And it seems like we've spent, you know, a great deal of money. But, you know, we've already got 4.7 million of our bonding capacity back this year. And if you look at, you know, what's gonna be next fiscal year, we've got about $2.6 million of the capacity that we try to only utilize. So that $2.6 coupled with the 20% that we lop off and save for regular day. So in just two years, after the building's open, you know, we're gonna have $5.7 million of our bonding capacity back currently. So not bad, considering kind of some of the past arguments, so.
Very good. Andy, you also first, any questions on that? Anybody? Okay. Next item of our reports, mayor's standpoint, I can obviously, I will. It's unfortunately a lose, so maybe COVID is over, a little in the face. But, you know, we kind of already touched on it anyway. But seeing that we're either one, two, or three of the nation in the gold specimen we just discussed, or do we need it, unfortunately, this is not gonna change anytime soon. As somebody who works in HR for their profession, this is all I know, was pretty much $80 a day just COVID. And like Chris mentioned prior, it's not so much the positive cases, it's all the preemptive. You know, like anywhere from 20, 30, 35, 40 people out each day, which is absolutely crazy. So just make it for everybody to do what you can to protect yourself, and everybody around you. You know, Thanksgiving coming, so getting the mask is gonna be a lot better. After the end of this month, and obviously Christmas is our own party as well, so. Anything from a council committee report, anybody? Chris, anything from your report?
No, it will actually be tomorrow is the first day that I get to come back into the office, so.
So your vacation's over? Perpetuity just...
I think I've actually even been busier, it's been more difficult at home because I have to Zoom every meeting.
Yeah.
I would go back and watch it and, yeah, it's been extremely interesting.
Yeah, just FYI for everybody. So AGON Transamerica announced that no one's going back to the office until July 2021. So just know, you know, that's what's on the horizon for a lot of people who work there.
Yeah, one thing that I do want to say is we are trying to limit the amount of, for instance, public work staff that are working together, so we haven't really done any big projects. You know, going into the winter, we'll try and continue to maintain that. City Hall is a little, little heated because we have everybody working in a separate room right now. But, you know, one of the, I guess, what I call the bright spot at this point is we're becoming more technologically advanced and we're getting back in the budget season and talking about solid waste and hopefully we can bring some more possibilities for the council. But, yeah, it is, it's been...
All right, anybody else? All right, so no further, this is someone saying...